Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this joint meeting of the Arlington Independent School District and the Arlington City Council. It's 5:06 PM on May 2nd, and we welcome you all.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words before we get going?
I would. This is, to me, another example of how we and you like to have partnerships. And almost everything we've accomplished as city council has been with partnerships. You can name almost anything, and I can prove to you that it came from a partnership. And I hope we develop that partnership here. Probably not tonight, but over the next few weeks.
Thank you, sir. And we do want to stay on timetable tonight. We'd like to finish by 6:00 PM. So if we could go with areas of existing cooperation, and I'll call the first speaker, Carrie Siegfried, talk about libraries in schools. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Siegfried, and I'm Director of Libraries for the City of Arlington. And I'm really happy to be starting us off today to talk about areas where the city and the school district are working very successfully together. Our Library Link program was actually initiated back in 2007 at the Roark Elementary Library. And since then, it's expanded to six AISD elementary schools. Funding for this program has been primarily from grants from both AISD Education Foundation as well as the Texas State Library and Archives Commission and the Arlington Tomorrow Foundation. The services offered through the Library Link program to the schools vary by the needs of the individual schools, but just kind of basically what they include are a collection of library materials for adults. This may include parenting material, education material, as well as some basic collections of fiction, self-help material, that kind of thing. It also includes board books for babies and toddlers, for families to be able to use the library together. All of the AISD staff is able to register families for an Arlington Public Library card. And of course, we also include programming for families with babies and preschoolers in that school library. Students and faculty and families can all place holds on materials from our entire 600,000-item public library collection and have those materials delivered by courier service to the school library. And that's a service that both families and faculty in all the schools take great advantage of. And most recently, in 2011, we were able to share data between our automation systems so that AISD student IDs can now be used as Arlington Public Library cards. So AISD students can use those cards to be able to access digital material from our collection remotely, as well as to have limited borrowing privileges with items sent to the school library. Of course, in addition to these basic Library Link services, we also work very closely with AISD staff in the implementation of early literacy program, both through the United Way Learn Well Grant, as well as the most recent Texas Literacy Initiatives Grant. In addition, we're going to be working with AISD family literacy staff next year from our Literacy House location to be able to offer family literacy programming in that location that's provided by AISD staff. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're doing between libraries, and we have high hopes of working together even more successfully in the future. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have specifically about library services, or we can move on to the next slide.
Mrs. Peña.
You specifically said the AISD students, and I want to -- I had a question from a parent in Grand Prairie where they had some problems getting books from Arlington. And you said that the ID is what will get them, whether they're from Grand Prairie or not, they'll be able to access libraries?
If they attend an AISD school, even if they live in Grand Prairie, a child, they can either use their student ID as their library card, or if they have a parent with them, they can apply for a regular Arlington Public Library card as well. All they need to do to be able to get a regular card is to be able to come into one of our libraries or apply online and show that they attend an AISD school. So even if they do live in Grand Prairie, as long as they attend that AISD school, they're eligible for a library card with us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Siegfried. Next item on the agenda is fire water intern programs. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, and good evening or good afternoon. It's a great pleasure to discuss our partnership and our collaboration with the city and with TCC, but specifically the city, with two programs. One is the Fire Academy, and the other one is our water program or water certification program. We'll start with the Fire Academy. And we speak oftentimes of partnerships and collaboration. This is true, the true manifestation of that. And I think that we should all be proud of the efforts of both staff, AISD staff and city staff. With the Fire Academy, we started this partnership with the Fire Department, Tarrant County College, and the goal was to prepare students for entry into fire service careers. And not entry two years after they graduated from high school, but entry after they graduated from high school. That was our goal. And the first AISD academy cohort was fall of 2011, this school year. It's a two-year cohort, so they're junior students that are going to be seniors next year. And we have 23 junior-level students this year. And I'll give just a couple of seconds there so you can see on the slide the students that are participating in that program. And they're all smiling, having a great time, earning credit, and looking forward to even more challenges in year two. At least, that's what they told. Cohort one timeline in 2011-2012 was to focus on classroom instruction and skill development. Next year, we're going to build those firefighting skills and then take those certification exams that are so critical in terms of preparation for employment. And they'll be taking that in the fall, the Commission of Fire Protection Certification exam. And in the spring, they'll complete the EMT certification training and the test. And again, to be prepared as they graduate from high school without transition, it'll be seamless. Cohort two, which is the next group of students that are coming in, we had 49 qualified applicants representing all six high schools. And 25 students are to be selected for that cohort two. And currently, they're in the process of interviewing and selecting those students based on physical ability, and they're testing, or they tested April 28th. And then there are interviews, and I've spoken with some of the staff, and they've conducted interviews this week. And they're very impressed with the quality of students that are interested. And the word has certainly gotten around our high schools. And so there's a lot of interest in this Fire Academy. Transition to our water certification program. This program came about as a partnership from AISD and the Arlington Water Department. And the goal was to prepare students for employment, again, in multiple areas of water purification and wastewater management systems. Not after, two years after they get out of high school, but as they graduate from high school, they'll be ready for employment. It's a 20-hour course, and we embedded that in a full-year class at Arlington High School. And so at the end of that class, they'll take the Class D Water License exam. And in Cohort one, we have 13 students. Cohort two, we anticipate having 20 students. And there's a picture of the students that are participating, having just as much fun as the Fire Academy. Seven students. This is kind of a growth of this program also is that paid and unpaid internships. And we certainly appreciate our community and different businesses that have allowed these students to have internships, which are very important to the program and the success of the program. And the summer of 2012, which is this summer, students have obtained, some of the students have obtained paid positions with these, used to be intern, now they're going to transition into some paid positions for the summer. And they have competed, and they've competed very well, and that's the information on this slide. These students have gone to competition where there is water knowledge and skill demonstration. And so students have placed in the top five. Other students have placed well and are a part of the state competition. And we've had a convention in San Antonio for a water department that's unique to the water department world. And students participated, and they took first and fourth places in different contests. So they're very proud of that accomplishment. At this time, I will take questions on the academy or the water program.
Mr. Mayor, can you speak about the diversity of the classes that you've had, both of the water department and the fire department? What does that look like?
We've really cast that net wide, and so we have both male and female. And we've had students from different interests, some that were thinking they were interested in the fire program as an example, and other students who are highly committed. This is what they wanted to do since they were in elementary school. And so this is just kind of a dream come true. And so from that aspect, it's been a diverse group. The staff, both AISD and fire department staff, I can't say enough of how they have mentored these students and really brought them along to be successful in the program. Anywhere from grades and parent contacts, home visits, employment opportunities to keep them in school. And so we've had a variety of different levels even of academic achievement, but it's all worked well because of the commitment of both staffs.
I guess I'll do it. Okay. I understand fire and firemen, but I'm not sure, what type jobs are the, is it an entry level in the water department? What does this qualify them to do in the water department? I'm not clear on that.
In essence, it's an entry-level position at the Arlington Water Department. And that's where the biggest need, at least it was articulated to us, that's where the biggest need was demonstrated, is that the turnover rate in that entry level from the city's water department. However, building in this program was the potential for students to get in early, which is what these students will be doing, and continue their education in the water department and the water program so that they would be motivated versus coming in after high school, not knowing what you want to do, obtaining employment, and then realizing, well, I can continue my education and maybe continue progressing in the water department. This was to create that path of success.
Thank you.
Claire?
Just one brief comment about the fire program. I've kind of watched that. It's awesome, absolutely awesome. And those kids, I shouldn't call them kids, I'm gonna call them kids. It's the only term I can think of right now. Jagadogs, there you go. They are totally committed to this cause, and our firefighters appreciate them and respect them. It is absolutely awesome.
Mr. Carr?
Dr. Cavassos, I see the number is 25. We had 49 qualified applicants. Is 25 going to be the max this program could ever be for hiring needs, or do we see any kind of growth potential with these programs?
We do see growth potential with these programs. One important point to keep in mind as we begin this program, just what you mentioned about employment potential, we want to make sure that we have a very good read on that and that this, with this first cohort, that we're able to get them employment, and they can obtain employment right after this program. And so we have to gauge that, both on the needs of the market needs with the fire department, but also on the success of the program. So for now, it is 25. And we've been in discussion about making sure the kids receive jobs, or at least opportunities to employment, before we go expanding beyond the market need.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Thank you. Dr. Cavassos, on the Fire Academy, we talked about 49 qualified applicants. Could you tell us more about what qualifies a student to apply?
They have to have a pretty strong academic preparation, passing their classes and certain GPAs and performance on even the state tests and things like that. That's kind of the first level that they have to meet. And then they have to have a strong interest in the program and the commitment. The other, which is a reality of our high school students, is they have to have room in their schedule and basically prioritize their path in terms of the last two years of high school. And so many students have different interests that it may not fit, that kind of time commitment, the commitment from the parents and the application process, why you want to be in the Fire Academy. It's a very high standard, and we have a lot of students who are interested, and then it keeps getting pared down to get the strongest applicants.
Ms. Katie Martin?
Thank you. I think our fire chief is here, Mr. Crowson. Chief Crowson, if you come to the mic, I have a question. As these students graduate and then we get them into employment, are we looking to employ them in Arlington? Are we preparing them to be employed wherever within a fire department?
I'm in discussions right now with AMR, our ambulance company. These students could be employed particularly immediately in the ambulance service. What we're also doing is preparing them to compete in the very competitive world of the fire service. It is very competitive, and the only way you can advantage yourself from a competition perspective is through education. We have a lot of people off the street coming in and applying, but you would be surprised, young people with a background of knowledge do very well in our test, and I think that's exactly what we're doing. We're preparing them for the competitive nature of the fire service. I'm gonna jump subject real quick, if you don't mind. I was talking to the doctor about this. I've received several letters from parents who told me change the children's lives through expectation, their attitudes, their dress, their appearance, their timeliness, their attention to detail has changed. Because I have an instructor back there who leads the program with expectation, and the letters are flowingly appreciative. Partnership and cooperation between the three agencies is really showing fruit now, we think. And our partners with AMR will open some doors in the medical industry while these students are competing in the fire service.
And we just recently had a new class go through fire training, not the students, but your general class. How many applicants did we have, and how many actually got picked up to go through the training?
Current class, we had about 1,500 applicants. We picked up 22, 23, so you can see it's a fairly competitive process. But we find that the candidates who are successful are the ones who have a background, a knowledge base. And that's exactly what these students are going to have. And we're going to make sure that they get a fair shot. Because we're not just changing the lives of these students, the students are changing the lives of our team too. They're connected.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes. Could you clarify the classroom instruction? Does that take place at the AISD campuses? And then when do we do actual training at Fire Training Center at Greenhouse?
It's basically a scope of different classes and training. The classes do take, the instruction does take place at our high school, and it's located at the San Houston High School. It is also at our College Center, which is our dual-credit center for students who take dual credit. These courses offer dual credit, and that's the partnership with TCC. That's how they get involved, is that not only are you obtaining high school credit, preparation for the certification of these exams and passing those exams for employment, but you're also obtaining dual credit so that you have a leg up in your associate's degree and then eventually your bachelor's degree when you get right out of high school. And so many times, we tout our students as, as soon as they're out of high school, they're prepared. This demonstrates that. And it demonstrates the fact that these are very desirable candidates for employment because they have these backgrounds.
So it's a daily schedule?
It is.
Every day, they take this class?
It's a block schedule, so it's every other. And that's a whole different discussion about block schedule.
And then when we go to the Fire Training Center, how often is that that we take our students?
We actually use the Fire Training Center once a month through the school year. We go out there for eight hours a day, and we do live fire skills there, skills that we can't perform at the campus. We also use, TCC has a multimillion-dollar facility, and we'll use their facility throughout the semester as well. We're working right now, since our students, Mr. Mayor, I had the kid problem too, so I call them students, it was an issue of mine. They're really not kids when we first saw them, they were. But when we first got them, they were so small, even the boys were so small that we just, we knew we were going to have to put some work into them. So during the summer months when they're sitting in front of the TV, we're going to do one day a week during, for every week of the summer months, working them out at our fire training facility, doing a PT program so that when they become young adults, they will have the muscle mass to do our job. So they get to use our facility quite often. I would like to also, oh, yeah, they will get 24 college hours on completion of the state certification test. They have to pass that test and obviously have a high school diploma, and they'll get those 24 college credit hours. I would like to mention one more thing about the building that we're building on campus, AISD. In August, AISD is building us a separate classroom slash bunker facility where we can house our bunker gear, where we could do more on-campus skills at the AISD Fire Academy so we don't have to worry about transporting the students to and from.
She like your job, don't she?
Let me just clarify, that's a temporary building, moving to San Houston. And he knows that. It's very similar, but it's, thank you. And I would like, I wasn't going to do this, but they're just anxious. Craig Wright and Ginger Polster, would you stand up? Craig Wright's our Director of CTE, or Career Technical Education. Ginger's our specialist. They're the ones who are doing the daily-day monitoring of the students and developing the partnerships as well.
Dr. Cavassos, I have one question, and then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, is that the students who are in the Fire Academy and in the water program, are they still on the regular four-by-four requirements?
They are.
Do the, do any of the fire courses or water courses count as their science?
No, they count as their electives.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 600 New York.
And to continue the discussion with partnerships and collaboration, 600 New York was a former Girls Inc. building. We just wanted to give you an overview of the services. I think you've had plenty of discussion about the legalities of the building and the construction and things like that. So services include, that will include in 600 New York is really a dropout recovery prevention center. And we'll have online courses, credit by exam. We'll be serving students who are overage at the eighth grade level, who need remediation and intervention to catch up with their peers. We'll have counseling, STAR tutoring, we'll have library access, acupuncture preparation, which is to college preparation, exam preparation, financial aid assistance, and homework help. In that building, once renovated and in operation, we plan to serve up to 575 students a year. And they won't all be there at the same time. You're probably wondering, that building, you know, 575 kids. It's students that need services at different times in the year and specific services. So one more credit to graduate, they can obtain it there, and then they'll be served and graduated. Students may need further assistance, they may be with us a little longer at 600 New York. And then we have additional services provided strictly from funding from Title I, and we're going to provide services for parents, for ESL for parents as an example, GED preparation for parents, childcare for toddlers through sixth grade, and then some citizenship training as well. So we're trying to combine the services in a need, in an area that's of high need and to provide the maximum support for that community. And 600 New York is just an optimal place to do it, and we appreciate the partnership between the city and the school. Questions?
Questions about 600 New York. Did we have a timeframe?
It should be operational according to Bob Carlyle in September, end of September.
Thank you. I have a question. Dr. Cavassos, can you clarify how the partnership between the city and the school district is structured specifically at this facility?
Okay. And the partnership really started with discussion about how to best utilize that building. The city had invested money through CDBG grants in that building for Girls Inc., which is a nonprofit organization. When they left that facility, then that building was available, the land, the property where the building is belongs to the school district. And so the building was really for community services, and it was vacant. And so the question came, does the school district have a need to serve students or the community in that area? And if so, can we partner to make this building functional to do that? And so there was a lot of discussion, went back and forth, different proposals with the city and our funding and the gaps in funding and things like that. Ultimately, we came to where we could use some grant funding from our end, and the city committed to CDBG funds from their end to match that gap or fill that gap. And then we had services, we were providing in different locations, consolidate them to that facility, basically to make it functional. And so we used a lot of grant, a lot of negotiation back and forth, and just planning and ideas. Everybody focused on the fact that we needed to provide more services in that area. And everybody came to the table with that, so we found solutions.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you.
I'm with the city. I'm the Assistant Director of Management Resources. I appreciate the opportunity to address you all today. I get to talk about one of the areas of potential collaboration that we have currently ongoing at the city. It's our Canon Print Center. And to give you a little background on this, this is something, it is a joint outsourcing of both the cities and the University of Texas at Arlington's print centers. The physical center is actually located in the city, in City Hall. We started thinking about this collaboration probably about two and a half years ago. As you can imagine, bringing two public entities together can take some working out. And so we have a successful partnership. We have, the city has an agreement with Canon and also an interlocal with the university. And that's how, that's how we're able to bring both areas of work into the same print center. It is run by Canon Business Solutions. The savings that we're looking at, because when the city came into it, we had been operating our own print center on an internal service fund. We had to recover our expenses while we were doing that. We're finding that these prices are about 10 to 20 percent lower than what we were able to achieve on our own. And the breadth of things that can be done in the print center, you have a brochure there. We clearly do the basic black and white color copying and printing, but they're all, they're much newer machines. These are digital presses. They can do things much faster than we used to be able to do them and at higher quality. This brochure is an actual example of something that we would do, but certainly not the most advanced type of thing we could do there. We do binding and all sorts of other things. In terms of customer service highlights, our, we have an online ordering system which allows people to interact with the print center from their desk, from their desktop. And so that is a seamless, is a seamless process. We also provide delivery currently to the university, and we continue to provide delivery to the, to city locations. So an item which is ordered does not have to be picked up, although it can be picked up, but does not have to be picked up at the print center. It can be delivered to the person who, the desk of the person who ordered. And as we're doing with the university, we, if we had the opportunity to work in a collaboration with the school district, there's also the opportunity to have a small satellite onsite location for either quick jobs or jobs which can be, don't need as advanced equipment. They need smaller equipment to produce it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from the group.
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Barron. As far as this, this contract with Canon, is there any limitations for the city or UTA as far as your own equipment bids and purchases for your in-house copy equipment? Did you have to go with Canon, in other words, as your self-provider, or is that completely independent of this opportunity?
Do you mean the printers and copiers which people have in their office areas?
Yes.
We outsourced that separately, actually. We went with a group called ImageNet, and that's another also opportunity available for collaboration, for additional partnerships. But no, that was done separately. We actually have Canon and OSA equipment in the print center itself.
Okay, okay. And I guess this question would be joint for you and, and our superintendent. Have, have we had any discussions with the school district at this point, as far as seeing how we can fit in if it works, as far as our, our potential in realizing the 10 to 20 percent decrease in costs that, that they are experiencing?
We haven't had any official discussions where staff's sat down, we've had some initial discussions that this is a possibility. We have our own print shop, and I think, you know, UTA had their own print shop, and the city had their own print shop, and so, we've looked at UTAs and the city's collaboration. And so, the, the purpose today is to, you know, is, is the, is the city and the school district, is there, is that possible to collaborate there also? You know, we, we print a lot, and, and so, the issue is, you know, how much could we collaborate at this center, at, at City Hall? And would it save us money, and also save the city money too? So, this is at the very beginning of our discussions, but the idea is be able to save both entities' money.
Just to follow up on that, the, the initial development of this opportunity, what was your timeline? How long did it take to go from the, the beginning assessment to the actual signing of the contract and turnkey on it?
You know, it was probably about two to three years from the very beginning. We did an RFI, a couple of sessions of RF, of the RFP, but now that all that groundwork's been done, that, that's not the type of timeline we would look to, to bring in an additional partner. We, we, you know, we've got all the, all the bugs worked out at this point.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
This question is probably more directed to Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell, would we be able to come up with some true cost for our internal printing so that we can compare, kind of on an apples-to-apples, what it would, either, what kind of savings we would be able to have from doing it through the partnership with the city?
Yes, absolutely, we would, and I, I think that our print shop manager keeps very good records on what it costs per copy for different types of copy, whether it's color, like and what, what have you, variations there. And so, I think that absolutely we could get unit costing that's very comparable to what the, the city has.
And when I say true cost, would that cost include the cost of maintaining the copy center and the staff?
Right, right. We can, we can take that all the way down to individual copies, where we're spending to copy materials versus what the city is spending, versus, we can look at equipment and facility needs as well.
Well, I would certainly like to see that report, so that we can see if, if there's a good opportunity for us there. Thanks.
Ms. Capehart?
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Jennifer, when we first started working with UTA on this initiative, and I realized we had to do all the groundwork, UTA had their own print shop. Do they still have skeleton type of print shop, or is everything coming to this joint print shop now?
They do not have, they do not currently still employ workers in a print shop, they're using that area for something else. Under the agreement with Canon, we have a satellite location located in the student center, the university hall area. It's a bit of a storefront, it's got two small, much smaller machines, and that's a, for staff and faculty on campus who can, who can walk up and get something fulfilled.
And so, how long, I forgot, has it been about six months that we've actually had the print shop up and working, or has it been that long?
We had a grand opening in March, but they have actually been operating, when, when the city actually closed its print shop in advance of that, and Canon ran it for a period of time that was prior to the official contract.
Okay, that's what I was remembering.
Yes.
And if we found another partner, do we have the equipment available to us, or would we have to add equipment to take on another partner?
It would depend on, on, on the partner, what the partner's needs would be. We have quite a bit of equipment, though, that does quite a variety of things. I have, I have a great deal of confidence that we could fulfill pretty much any other public sector partner in what they would want. We also still, as we did before, there are certain jobs that it just doesn't make sense to do in-house, and we, we work, we leverage the knowledge and the relationships that we have in the print center with some outside contractors, and are able to get very good prices through outside, you know, with, with outside vendors as well.
And is there an out clause for either party?
Can you say a bit more about that?
A contractual out clause, if something, you get it up and it's not working, and it becomes a problem, is there a way, either party can get out of the contract?
There's, there are service level agreements in there that we, that we want to meet certain levels, and they're tied to, you know, default determination or things like that, but, so, those do exist.
Okay. And then finally, has it been an issue at all in getting, since it's being printed at City Hall, and getting it couriered over to UTA? Has that been working in a very timely fashion?
It has been, it has been. We, I, I think they have a regular schedule of going over and dropping off and picking up, and so, I think that's at least once or twice a day, I could check that for you, but it is regular.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Fleet Services, Ms. Powell.
Good evening. It's quite a pleasure to be here with you all to discuss some opportunities that we think that the city and, and school district may share to save both entities' money, and then ultimately our taxpayers. So, I'm going to report on some very preliminary discussions that city and school district staff members have had recently regarding fleet services. This particular discussion really stems from a broader question of, is there or are there services and goods that we can procure together in order to save both entities' money? And so, in the specific area, we've started with fleet services to look at what options we might have available there. The city has 960 assets in its vehicle fleet, and the school district has 453. So, we've looked at different things that, that we both procure, common needs that we might have, we're beginning to look through cost information, bid pricing on these different things, to see again if there are opportunities for us to share some procurement opportunities there, to save everybody some money. In particular, we've talked about fuel, we've talked about towing, perhaps bodywork, and so, we have a number of things that we're considering. The biggest one is fuel, diesel fuel. Already, in this fiscal year, the school district has spent about $900,000 on diesel fuel. Certainly, we will exceed a million dollars in, in a normal 12-month period. We bid diesel fuel, the city purchases its diesel through a national co-op. And looking at pricing, the pricing that the school district has on its individual bid is actually lower than what the city's paying right now through this co-op. So, we think that may be a place where there's an opportunity to save some money. Our diesel bid is up in August, so we will be rebidding that contract this summer, and so, that's something that we will have some discussion about, to see if there is a possibility of the city likewise bidding that service or that commodity with us, and perhaps boost the total volume that we're purchasing, and save everybody some money. Towing is, is another thing that we've looked at. We obviously both have needs to tow vehicles from time to time, unfortunately. And what we found is that we each have bids in place with different towing companies, and our pricing is very comparable there. We have two vendors on bid, one of them actually has a little bit less or lower pricing than, than what I see on the city bid. But again, it, for the most part, that, that is very comparable. In terms of bodywork, I think what we're finding is certainly on our end, we've done very, very limited bodywork, fortunately, and most of what we do has been in-house. So, that's an area where we're going to consider, or continue to have some conversation. But we actually executed, or these two bodies actually each executed, an interlocal agreement in 2009 that would allow us to purchase off of each other's bid pricing. And so, we have some opportunity to do this here. And so, we will continue these discussions, and I think even more importantly, we're going to expand this to, to sit down together and look at what other areas we might have some, some common opportunity in, to see again, you know, where, where can we save everybody some money?
Questions? Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Barron. Ms. Powell, is, is there anything that's potentially impeding to either body, as far as the logistics of contracting, or are fiscal years and budget cycles not lining up? Is there anything like that that we have to be cognizant of?
The fiscal year issue would not be any sort of hindrance to purchasing off of bids. Bids take place year-round, they may not line up with our own fiscal year even, and so, no, that would not prepping us from buying off each other's bids. And we'd have to look, you know, it's going to be a case-by-case situation where you look at a particular contract that's in place currently to see, you know, can we access that pricing? Is there some sort of restriction on, on the particular quantity of service or the capacity of that vendor to service the current contract? We may have to wait until a particular contract comes up for renewal to do something jointly. There may be other places where that's not the case.
The other question I had as a follow-up is the 900,000 gallons of diesel that the district?
No, it's dollars.
Dollars, sorry, dollars.
Right.
Is that projected to decrease with the increase of propane buses coming online?
And, and it will, to some degree. That is one thing where we do have a difference. The school district purchases some propane now, and that will be somewhat of a, that's going to be a growing need that we have as we acquire more propane buses. The city does not have any propane-fueled vehicles. They do have, I believe, one C and G vehicle with several more coming, I think is what I understand. So, we do have a slight variation there, but we do both purchase a lot of diesel fuel.
I think the, the opportunity to continue the discussions is exciting. I think there's a lot of savings that we can realize, both sides.
I noticed the lack of repairs and maintenance being on that list, and I know that the city we outsource have a contract with that, and that's been in an area that we've struggled to keep under control. We have a lot of unusual vehicles that require some special maintenance, and the cost is pretty high. Is that an area you think that not be potentially something we could develop as well?
I, I think absolutely we can explore that possibility. As you said, city outsources its, its maintenance. We have our own garage, we do have a variety of vehicles, we have school buses, you have fire trucks, police cars are very specialized. So, we have some differences there, but we have a lot of common needs, pickup trucks and sedans and SUVs and what have you. I, I believe I understand the city, the current contract, I think expires in fall, and I think that there's already some interest there from the city's part to extend that with current terms in place. So, and it did not permit for any other entity to, to access that, that pricing.
Mr. Mayor?
I was kind of interested in what you said about propane. Do they make school buses with methane, being able to use natural gas as opposed to propane?
We do have, there are some buses you can get that are compressed natural gas.
Right.
And we specifically, we looked at both, and we began our, to, to look for alternative fuel sources when we started our 2009 bond program. And what we determined is that it was going to be a very, a better value to us, and make more sense to go the propane route than compressed natural gas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell. That brings us to the final item on the agenda, which is future agenda items relative to additional opportunities for collaboration or partnerships. As this is a fairly open agenda item, I'll caution all the members that we will not be discussing anything that somebody brings up. So, if you've got an idea for a future item, certainly bring it up, but we will not be able to discuss it in this forum because it's not on the agenda. Robert, Mr. Mover?
All right, thank you. I've received a lot of input from citizens regarding this meeting, and in terms of asking folks, you know, what do they feel they'd like to hear from and, and visit about, and so, I'm not saying I necessarily agree with everything that I heard, but I'll list a couple of the things that were brought up. The first was school uniforms for students, just, again, that was something brought up. Something that I feel a little bit more strongly about, though, is the need to bring back a little bit stronger public safety presence in our schools, and obviously, there's a lot of collaboration needed between, and continue to build on the positive relationship that we do have between our police department and our SRO officers and, and public safety officials with the district, but specifically the DARE program, the Fatal Choices program, and also additional gang officer presence in the schools. And so, those are things that folks have inquired about. Thank you.
Ms. Capehart?
Thank you. With regard to potential other items we might want to look at, unfortunately, in our city, we incarcerate people from time to time, and we must feed them, of course. And I know you guys have a significant food budget, so I would think that potentially there might be some opportunity there with regard to some partnership with acquiring food services.
Mr. Bennett?
A question, do you have additional school sites that are on your strategic plan for building in the future? If that's the case, then perhaps that would be a discussion we could have, if there's a way the city could, to proactively support you, if there's infrastructure that might need to be prioritized, if there's site locations that we could be assistance in. Just, I, I think that would be a great opportunity for us to be proactive with the school district.
Thank you.
I know we've talked about this, the superintendent and I have discussed this a few times, but I think we ought to keep our eye on electrical prices. I know we use different vendors, but there may be a possibility that we can save money by doing it together. I think, I think you checked on that last year, we weren't sure about it. We're part of an aggregation, the city aggregation rate, which is pretty significant, I mean, pretty low compared to other rates. So, just something we might want to speak about in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Spade?
I have two items. One is the emergency services that the school district and the city can collaboratively do. I know we do some now, but what can we do better? And the other one is special needs. We have special needs children, but we don't have special facilities, and so, perhaps we can talk about some kind of collaboration in providing that, because it goes beyond 12th grade education, and when they go into adults. And I think the city has done some work in that area, and perhaps the school district can help as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Barron. As the mayor mentioned on energy, I know we employ an energy conservation manager. Could we coordinate services between energy conservation groups from city departments, city buildings with school district buildings? Also, one is, I know the city's putting a lot of effort into standardized beautification outside of buildings. I think it'd be important for us to have those discussions and talk about what we need to do to have a standardized front of what we're doing to change the look of Arlington that we're looking at.
Mr. Hibbs?
I would think that one of the areas that we could look at collaboration is also in grounds and maintenance. We both have properties, and most of them are in proximity of one another, and I would think that we might look at our contracts and see if there's a potential of being able to have some type of synergy there.
Okay, I have a list, I've been, been quiet because I thought some of these things would already come up, and they have. The, on, on contract sharing, one thought I had was related to professional services as far as accounts payable, payroll, those types of things, maybe there's something we can combine there, something to put on an agenda to look at. Combined communications or marketing initiatives, we both have our internal groups, maybe there's something we can do, let's talk about it. Facilities, land share, what I mean by that is tied into our, our gas drilling, minerals management, land use management, that type of thing. I know that the city's done an excellent job in putting together their team in assessing the, the revenue realized, and the potential revenue realized on gas, on gas wells and just land that the city owns, and, and we also have something similar to that, but I would like to see that on an agenda, to see if we can combine and, and share our knowledge and potential resources there. Let's see. Technology, and specifically, I'm looking at the sharing of our infrastructure of technology. Maybe there's interlocals or things that, that we can do, whether it's cell towers, internet service providers, use of fiber, those types of things. I think there's probably something there that we could realize. And then, I would also like to put on a future agenda, a, more of a, a discussion for joint appearances for all of us together, and talking about strategic planning and strategic visioning together to be more partners. And then the final thing, with all of that said, for the next agenda, I would propose us to discuss perhaps a, a subcommittee of this group, so that we have, rather than these semi-formal gatherings, if you will, an opportunity for us to talk and develop other ideas offline to bring back to the committee as a whole, if you will. Thank you.
Mrs. Solent?
Thank you. I would like the committee to consider collaboration on recruiting- I would like the committee to consider collaboration on recruiting volunteers, mentors and advocates and tutors to encourage growth and student achievement in the city.
Well, that's a list of suggestions.
That's for the next year.
We couldn't talk about it, so gotta put it out there.
I want to thank the staffs on both sides for putting this together for us. Truly appreciate it. I know the public appreciates it. Thank Dr. Reich for working so closely with the mayor's office to get this ball rolling to start with. Thank the mayor for participating. All the city council taking time out of your busy schedules to come in and sit with us. Mr. Mayor, would you like to say something?
I think I've said it. Thank you.
All right. In that case, next week. We're adjourned.